Super good morning. Thank you all for being here for this off scheduled meeting. It's April ninth, twenty twenty five. I'll call this meeting to the Amherst School of the Amherst School Board to order at eight forty-five. We have the following board members attending in person, Ms. Terry Beam, Mr. Brian Gould, myself, Shannon Gascoigne. Um, board member, um, Mr. Greg Fritz is joining us virtually. And Jason White is not with us this morning. Mr. Fritz, can you confirm that it is impractical impractical for you to join us in person this morning?
Yes, it is.
Great. And are you, are you alone?
I'm alone in my hotel room, yes.
Great, thank you. All right, from the SAU, we have Superintendent Mike Berry and Business Administrator Amy Facy. Um, since you're attending uh virtually this morning, Mr. Fritz, we will be taking all votes by a roll call. And before we begin, I would like us to take a moment just to affirm the jet, affirm the agenda for today's meeting. So. This is a little bit of a new practice, but basically just trying to provide a formal opportunity to ensure that we have all. Review the agenda and are aligned on our objectives for the discussion. So by doing this together, we can. Um, just create a productive space for our work and provide any clarifications if needed. So is everyone good on the agenda for our brief meeting today? Yes.
Yes.
All right, great. Super, thank you. All right. So before I open the public comment, there was a note in um. In the board notes, it's been recommended by the administration that we suspend virtual comments at this meeting. I will note that it doesn't look like. We have anyone virtually, Mike, is that?
We have an iPhone unnamed iPhone guest.
Okay, so we have someone unnamed listening in. Um, so as you recall, we had an unfortunate occurrence at our last public comment. The incident is still under review and we'll need an opportunity to determine how we foster public participation while implementing appropriate safeguards. Uh, moving forward. So the statute does not require that we offer a virtual public comment. Uh, we will discuss this at our meeting next week. So that's kind of, that's the recommendation. Would anyone like to make that motion? To suspend the virtual public comment at this meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Gould. A second from Ms. Beam, if there are any discussion.
Yeah, I have just comments on this. I know it's probably practical because like I said, nobody's. Um, dialed in right now with their name identified, so nobody would be promoted to. Public comment, but um, you know, I think Terry and I had our backs to the screen last week, so I I didn't see the video content. But I understand people I trust that it was pornographic in nature. And of course, this is upfront to civil discourse, the whole point of having. Public comment has no place at school meetings and in the or the schools. I think we can agree on that, hopefully. Um, but we should not let. The misdeeds of one individual taking advantage of a public comment opportunity to strip all voices of the public. You know, public comment is a forum where residents can speak their minds and hold the power to account. To curtail this right, because one person's abuse would be to punish the many for the sins of the few. It would show our community, we cannot handle the liberties of a civilized society. We cannot figure out how to run a virtual meeting in twenty twenty-five. And now I think about an alternative, think about if someone were to strip naked in person. Would you then move and second a motion to restrict public attendance to their own meeting? How fragile is the freedom in your hands? The quorum should be maintained, but silencing the public altogether is not the answer. Many of our residents are unable to attend an eight forty-five AM meeting like this one or a five thirty PM meeting like the last one in person. Partly because they're working to earn the funds to in part pay taxes upon which his body relies, okay? It's through open dialogue, even when it's messy or uncomfortable, that we can forge a stronger society. We should not abandon that principle now because of one criminal action. Instead, we should defer our commitment to free expression tempered by responsibility and ensure the space remains a measure of how civilized we are. In Amherst, New Hampshire, we love liberty and hate crime. All those who vote no now on restricting public comment, join me in supporting liberty. Even when it's messy, please vote no. Thanks.
Yeah, so just to be clear, Greg, thank you for your for your feedback there. Um, we're not looking to restrict virtual public comment indefinitely. This is just. To allow us an opportunity to to determine how we can um offer public participation opportunities and provide the. The necessary safeguards, um, you know, to to do that well. So just, I just want to be clear in that we're not talking about, you know, at this point restricting it, um. Uh, you know, indefinitely or or any any of those things. I think the whole the whole point is to to make certain that we can. Offer opportunities to our community.
We've all lived through too much, okay, sorry, go ahead there.
Terry's next, and then we can circle back to you.
So it's just my understanding that we're only being upfront that we're only doing it for literally this one meeting until we have a chance to meet. At our next meeting and come up with a better plan.
Correct.
Yeah, I I would like to comment on this. Um. I think it's 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 a worthy conversation. Um, and I think there are other ways to participate in a public meeting through written format. Through submitting emails, through submitting a written comment. Uh, and that's why we added the board correspondence. This is something that I was going to be recommending prior to this event happening. Uh, I did reach out to about twenty superintendents in our area. And got feedback on, you know, whether they, two questions I asked. Do you allow, oh, excuse me, do you live stream your meetings? It was a hundred percent yes. And so the second question is, do you allow for virtual public comments? And only one school district out of over twenty allow for virtual public comment. And there are a variety of reasons why. I think it's worthy of a conversation. And but for now, while we sort through this and while uh people respect. Uh, my recommendation as the superintendent at this moment in time, while we can kind of reset. Because I was afraid of immediate copycat incidents at the Suhegan Board. At the Mount Vernon Board Meeting on on Thursday, prior to this meeting being scheduled. Based on hire. So I appreciate, you know, the conversation, Greg. I do think we want to have more of it. And uh, and and it can be a bigger conversation when we are all not running off to start our work day. And uh, but I I'm with you, Greg, to have a conversation about it.
All right, before before I come to you, I see your hand, Greg. Mr. Gould, do you have anything that you'd like to say on the matter? I mean, sure, everybody has a.
Sure, I appreciate that. Uh, I'm glad you reached out to other schools. I actually have a friend who's involved over at Milford and um. Growing up in New York, they were a little bit more rigorous with the validation of who you are instead of just saying, you know, I'm Brian Gould, Amherst, like. Actually give an address. Uh, we could validate that address, I think, pretty easily. Um, I I think Greg made a good point. You don't want to limit people, especially because. Uh, the times we are, a lot of people like to do things virtually, so um. I I agree with that aspect, but I think we need to be a little more rigorous for sure. Just letting people jump on with the uh trust of just, hey, I'm I'm Brian, I'm Amherst.
All right, Greg, anything else?
Yeah, okay, so two final points. The main point is that I'm not comfortable suspending liberties temporarily even. We would just live through. A horrible period in our time where we gave temporary emergency powers to people, or we didn't, but other people that were elected did. And it was a disaster for our state and our community. I'm not willing to suspend liberties temporarily, especially at this meeting. We're at eight forty-five. There's no children here, there's no children in uh watching online, children are at school, there's nobody even online. This completely kind of easy decision here. To say, we are going to look at the face of these criminals and say, you're not going to change our policies for us. We are going to continue to honor this system, and if you are a criminal, we're going to refer you to. The authorities which we have, we're going to pursue crime, but we support liberty even when it's messy. So I'm definitely a no on this.
Uh, how about this, Greg? Would you be satisfied if we, I offered an amendment that allowed us to take written public comment through the chat? Feature, but have the camera off, which would require us to. Uh, that's as an amendment to our policy, B E D H, which says the camera needs to be on. Is that acceptable?
I don't, because I attended the Suhegan meeting and in virtually, I was expecting to give public comment. And at the beginning of the meeting, they did um change the policy. And so I was typing my my comment in. And I wasn't finished typing uh before the uh public comment period was called to an end. So, no, I I've actually experienced that and it's not suitable for this meeting. So I'd like to um. I'd like to keep it going, show these criminals that we are not changing our policy because their behavior, we can handle it. We're not so weak that a single criminal can upset our entire operations. There's no people under eighteen at risk at this meeting. Let's just have the meeting.
Okay, all right. So we've all set our piece. We have a motion on the table, all in favor of us. Um, so actually, I will go ahead and just make that amendment. We have one person online. So I'm, I will. Make the amendment. So let's first vote on the amendment. The amendment is to allow comment through the chat.
Do we need to? Motion the amendment?
Yeah, so the first motion will be to approve the amendment, which is, so my motion is to. Make an amendment, yeah.
Do you want to go in the same order to make it easier?
Sure.
Okay, so we have a second from Brian. All in favor of the amendment?
It's a voice vote, right?
Uh, sorry, to roll poll, so Gascoigne, yes.
Gould, yes.
Bean, yes.
I'm going to vote yes because this is less horrible than voting no. So Fritz, yes.
Okay, great. So now we have the motion as amended, which is to. Suspend the virtual public comment video portion, but to allow it with the chat feature for this meeting, all in favor. Oh, yeah, we've already had the motion in a second, so all in favor. Uh, Gascoigne, yes.
Yes.
Bean, yes.
Fritz, no.
Motion carries. At this time, I will open the public comment. There is no one in the room. Um, if the individual attending online would like to enter their name into their panelist or into their um. Uh, avatar there, um, if there's any public comment there in the chat, we can take that. Seeing none, but we'll keep watching that as we move along and come back to it if there are any questions. All right, so moving on to our first agenda item, board committees. At our last uh meeting, we appointed one member to the Brick School Committee. However, as we are the lesser of the um. Uh, Brick School, we need two reps. So Terry, you served on this previously. I see your hand there.
Yeah, I have, and I actually, since I'm also on building and grounds, I'd like to return to it just for continuity.
To the Brick School.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Um, does anyone else feel strongly you want to take a turn? But um, it's it's not a heavy lift and I think it would help with continuity.
Yeah. All right, great. So Terry will serve as our Brick School uh Committee, second committee member. Thank you, Terry. All right, Building and Grounds. So um, as a reminder, Terry and Greg are our reps on the committee. So as such, they should be the point of contact for um Building and Ground Committee related items. We did receive correspondence from the committee chair, um Christine Grayson expressing her resignation due to other obligations. So I would like to just formally accept her resignation with regret and um take this time to publicly thank Ms. Grayson for her outstanding commitment to our community. And to the committee. Um, just pulling up simply here, we have. One, two, three, four. We have five committee members, it looks like, um. Uh, who have a desire to remain on the committee. Uh, the committee is composed of seven to nine voting members, and we may also choose to appoint alternates if desired. We current.
Seven to nine, what that includes?
That includes the board. Oh, yeah, so I guess we have seven, including you and and Greg.
Okay.
So five looking to remain, two including you and Greg.
So that could be considered full, but then we could also go to nine plus alternates.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So I think we have possibly three action items before us this morning. Um, one, to just formally reappoint the existing members. Um, two, possibly direct the SAU to put out a call for additional members and establish a timeline for that. Um, and then three, to appoint uh two board members to collect. The forms of interest and make the recommendations on those members, the process that we followed last year. Um, so would anyone like to, I guess we could start with the reappointment of the existing members. Does anyone?
Can I make a point before we do that?
Yep.
Thanks. So it seems odd that we are saying that the chair resigned and then we're reappointing members. So. I think the right way to view this is that the body, the subcommittee of the. Or the committee of the of the board ceases to exist when a new board is seated. And so I think the person that resigned is more, it's not like they didn't resign during a term. They are simply saying they don't want to serve again this term. So I do agree thanking that person for their uh service. But it's not actually a chair, it's not actually resignation. And because if it if it was, we'd no sense to reappoint. The members again, they would they would have some term as well. So I think it's appropriate to say we thank previous members. Uh, but now we have to reform a new committee. Um, and so I think it's appropriate, what you're saying now, is we could vote to reappoint the members that are currently on. Does that make sense?
Um, I think I'm following you. I think historically, this has kind of been a rolling committee and just as a formality, we like to reaffirm their commitment. And and, you know, so I I guess maybe I used the wrong phrase with reappoint, maybe I should say reaffirm. Um, we haven't really had, you know, a formal. A formal uh term for these for these folks. It's been kind of rolling and we've appreciated continuity. Um, with members willing to, volunteers willing to to give their time there.
So tell you what, can we do something different? Instead of just starting with the people that were already on, could we ask? Uh, everyone to reapply, to start from, start from zero, start from Terry and I are the reps and have everyone apply. Everyone gets an equal shot. We find the best volunteers in town. And they are seated. We'll also have alternatives and we'll have public comments. People can comment if they're not on the committee as well. Is that a of? Because I think we've been through enough in this community with Billion Grounds that it's appropriate, I think, to start from zero baseline. On this committee.
Does anyone else have any thoughts on on that process?
I do.
Mr. Gould.
Who would vote them in?
It would be the whole body, like like usual, just like right now, we would say, hey, I always want to reaff- reaffirm or reappoint the same people that are that were on last year. It'd be the same idea. So Terry, what happened last year was the two school board reps, with Tom and I. We reviewed the applicant applicants, we downselected to ones that we thought were appropriate, ended up being all of them that we couldn't discount, I believe, for. Reasons like residency. And then we brought to the full board, the board voted on those members, which I'm just, we repeat, and then. Um, that is the, that is the committee. And of course, people can quit. There's no term, they're not like, you know, they're not locked in or anything, but um. I also would like to think that we could include people. Who schedules are different than than the previous uh meeting times at like eleven AM. So we may want to have. Um, you know, skilled workers in the in the trade that maybe aren't available at that time. We could have evening meetings, weekend meetings, right? Because the the superintendent staff does not need to be at the all these meetings, right? There really, it's really a committee of the school board. So that that's the process I'd like to see is is the best people on the board and let's work around the schedule of those folks.
Ms. Bean? Um. I hear what you're saying. I absolutely do, Greg. We've already, we've already vetted and we've already got a commitment and to dismiss those who've already been serving. For no reason other than, well, it's a fresh year, let's start fresh. Um. I think they've already been vetted. Some of them haven't been on very long, actually. Some have been on for less than a year. We've already, we've already reaffirmed and some no longer have an interest in serving, but a majority do. And I would like to respect that. The effort has already gone in to seek and move forward with those and to keep them unless there was some reason they couldn't. The reason that it currently meets during the day, but it's near lunch to make it as accommodating as possible is. So we don't put undue burden on our SAU staff. And while there could always be additional meetings if needed, or subcommittees that meet at other times. Because we're, we probably will have at least one or two spinoffs of the main committee. And that could broaden the people that we work with as well. So I feel like because we have these other opportunities to bring others into the work that's being done, and I want to remind. That Wilkins is not the only thing on our agenda, right? Like, there are many things Building and Grounds does. So Building and Grounds, because of the many things that they address. Um, we absolutely do need. SAU staff for quite a bit of that and not making an undue burden on them and even more time than what's already asked of them after hours. I'm not comfortable asking for that at this time. I want to be very thoughtful and um deliberate about any additional time we ask of them. Um, with the many, many things we do ask, because I think it's important work and we need to have their input on a lot of it. And so I I would motion that we keep the people we already vetted and who have already. Committed to staying and that we simply fill the gap. And we fill the gap the way we have previously where where we vet a list. But I would like to uh have some alternates if we have the space for it, because that is something that I don't think we've had for a while, right?
Yeah.
And that way, those people can show up and they can, they can be part of the process and they can absolutely have a voice and and be a little more engaged. Than than just showing up as public comment, right? Like, I think that you're an alternate, you have a, you feel a little more vested. Um, but because I do know that we're thinking of having these these subcommittees where we will have. A wider group that we are talking to probably at more convenient times. Um, for working schedules, because trust me, I'm missing, I had to schedule my work meetings around being here right now too, I get it. And so, um, I think that keeping it limited for the day meetings, but then having some other ones as the work requires. Is what I would recommend. And so I, um, since I don't think there's any wrongdoing of anybody who's currently serving and they all would still like to serve. I would like to keep them and then simply fill out our our ranks to as many as possible, so go to the full nine. That's in our charter to do, and then also have alternatives. I think that would be great, or alternates, alternates, not alternatives.
Okay, so to be clear, um, I believe I heard you say you're making a motion to reaffirm the existing members. Is that, is that your motion?
As step one, yes.
Okay, all right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any additional discussion on the motion on the floor? Okay, all in favor, roll call vote, we'll start with Ms. Bean.
Bean, yes.
Gould, yes.
Gascoigne, yes?
It passed. I support people that are on there. It'll end the process. I'm gonna vote no, but I support all people that are on there. They could have gotten reassigned with a with a resume process, but Fritz, yes. But Fritz, Fritz, sorry, Fritz, no, Fritz, no on the motion. I'm sorry, Fritz, no on the motion.
Fritz, okay. All right, great. So then the next step is to direct the SAU to put out. The call for additional um members. Uh, would anyone like to make that motion to direct the SAU to do that?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Will makes a motion, second. Ms. Bean, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Um. Ms. Bean? I would like to expand it to as many as we can. So we traditionally have gone with seven, but I'd like to go ahead and and increase that to the full nine. I think there's a lot of important work to do and that would help us. Um, have it help us, more voices sometimes don't make it faster, but that's okay. I think it's important to have a lot of, a lot of voices, so. Um, I would like to call to go to that full nine plus alternates. And since we do have enough to at least begin our work. I think that the timeline doesn't necessarily have to be finished before the next meeting. Um, I just want to put that out there. I think that that it could be finished by next meeting, but if we want to give a little bit of time to let people apply and go through and. Do all that and maybe accept it our next meeting. If the two don't overlap, um, I think we should keep our our next meeting as scheduled, even if we don't have the expanded group. Does that make sense?
Ms. Facy, so I have a question. Um, along those lines, so. You would be looking to to appoint these new folks at your May board meeting, is that correct? Because your your April meeting is next week, so that wouldn't give enough.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so you're, so the board would be appointing in May. Uh, I'm just asking because when we put out the request for applications, we want to have a deadline um for that. So just wanting to make sure we have the timing correct.
Yeah, exactly. And that's why I'm saying, I think that even if we voted in in our May meeting for for adding two, I think we have enough already. To have a quorum so we could continue to have.
For yourself.
Yeah.
Okay, so Ms. Bean is saying for a May um Amherst School Board appointment. Mr. Fritz, I see your hand.
Yeah, thanks. So one of the challenges going to nine is that now we need, you know, five for the quorum, which could be challenging with the times. Um, so I just risked that. But and so with Amy, with your, with your um. Job rack, whatever it's called, we're putting out there, call for candidates. Let's make sure that we can inform people that there is this eleven o'clock meeting planned. Um, so we can see if people are available then, but we're, but Terry also mentioned we'd have maybe subcommittees that may meet. Uh, other other hours that are more convenient. So I don't want to, I don't want to make the eleven o'clock availability requirements over top of people who are. You know, technically qualified for the position. So can you work on some wording that helps communicate both of those um simultaneously, please?
So, um, I'll have my address second. Katie Gary will put out the um. The communication.
Yeah, we can, we can create the posting as flexible as possible while we see who's interested in and then make scheduling decisions based on who is. Who's interested and willing to serve. Um, I want to caution this board and Greg specifically you. Um, and other people that ninety percent of the work of the Buildings and Grounds is done through the SAU based on the recommendations and the desire of the. Builders and grounds committee. And it's historically always been that way. It's done that way in many school districts. The people on the payroll are not the Amherst Building and Grounds, the people who are the stewards of the taxpayer dollars, it's a partnership between the SAU and the board. The daily operation and management of the SAU thirty-nine and Amherst School District falls within the authority of the superintendent. As I'm the only employee and anyone who is asked to serve on the Amherst Building Ground is a directive from me, not the board. And so I need to be very clear as we decide how many hours we want to work. And I keep telling people, we already work sixty to eighty hours a week with everyone on the letterhead. That's Amy Facy, that's Dr. Jennings, that's Dr. Chamberlain, that's Mike Berry. And so when you create more committees and subcommittees, you're asking these people. Who are who are providing services to ensure that you are, you are. You are ready to run your meetings and do the work. That includes asking Roger Preston and others, that's important to coordination. Because the board does not contact the CPMs or the engineers or the architects. It's it's our office. So I just want to caution as we look to partner. Um, I do think creating seven to nine doesn't make it super nimble. I know it's far more work than the Wilkins Project. You know, with Amherst Middle School, with decisions that need to be made at Clark. And with the Wilkins Project not passing, there will be conversations on things that need to be done. At Wilkins to get the school ready for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year and start to plan for the next one to three years. So I just want to, you know, kind of make sure that we're remembering the work in front of us for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Is not simply designing the best Wilkins Project, right? It is making plans to make sure that we have a safe, secure. Now, building at Clark, AMS, and Wilkins. And uh, so I just need to add that, but we'll make the, we'll make the. Um. We'll make the posting as broad as we can to attract as di- diverse of applicants as we can. And then we'll make decisions on how we organize after that.
Okay, and I see, I see two hands up. Just a reminder, the motion on the floor that we are discussing. Is to direct the SAU to um to to make the uh to the call for camp. For applicants out into the community, for members of Building and Grounds. That's what we are discussing right now. So, Mr. Fritz. Anything?
Okay, thanks. So to Mike's point, I think, I think, Mike, I think you're mistaken on something. So help me out if if I'm if I'm wrong. This is important to get right and I may be wrong. So my understanding is that this committee was created by a vote of the school board, which is not under your purview. You know, so the school board created this committee. Now, we work really well together. Our 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 committee at Billion Grounds recommends to the school board. And the school board puts things on the warrant, not, you know, not you, not your people, but your people are incredibly important to the actual execution of the facilities. As you're, as you're pointing out, but it's totally possible, I believe, help me out if I'm wrong here, for us to create subcommittees. Which you, which Roger, you, none of, none of you guys are involved with. You don't have to comment Saturday morning discussions of Amherst residents. But we can do that and then filter that up to the Billion Grounds Committee in an eleven o'clock meeting. And then that can go to a board, we can inform you of of those findings through multiple methods, electronic methods or at board meetings. I don't think you need to be at every meeting of people airing their opinions and we we are also allowed to call. Um, vendors and and make motion. Now, yes, you guys have been doing it, but historically, those those, you know, the efforts of the of the previous groups have not resulted in. You know, the progress resulting in the community values of Amherst voters. So I really, I I think that your team has a great job of executing on the facilities we have. But we obviously need some new brains in the mix of considering how we can reflect the community values better. So I I think I want to, I want to simplify your team's time, Mike. I want you guys to focus on the things that you're really good at. Executing on the building plans, um, delivering education within the buildings. But let the Billion Grounds create their own subcommittees that potentially one of them might be looking at completely different alternatives to. Delivering elementary school education apart from destroying and rebuilding Wilkins. Other groups might be looking at how to modify the previous plans, but we don't need, I don't believe, to take more of your time. For those kinds of meetings and yet we accomplish the goals of respecting the community members' opinions.
No, I hear you, Greg.
All right, so right now, just a reminder, the motion on the floor is for us to direct the SAU. To send out a call for additional committee members.
As long as I answer my question, do those members report to Mike or to the board? That's very important for our call for for new members. Who do they report to?
There are subcommittee of the board. There are subcommittee of the board.
Not Mike.
There's a subcommittee of the board and they'll be making recommendations to the board. The board then directs the SAU. It's a partnership.
But I will tell you, I decide who goes to that meeting as representatives of the SAU, not the board.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. We have a motion and a second. We'll start with the roll call vote. Um, beginning with Miss Bean.
Did we wait? I'm sorry, did we did we end discussion?
Unless you have another.
I.
I feel like we've discussed it a lot, but if you have something different.
I just have a very brief one, a very brief one.
Go on.
Um, I I am sensitive to, and I already said that sometimes adding more voices doesn't make things go quicker. I get that. But I think there's also sometimes a problem getting a quorum and there's a problem having enough people in the room to have productive conversations. So having a slightly larger pool to draw from because something during the day, work doesn't always cooperate. So that's why I think expanding it slightly to the nine actually gives us a better chance of making sure that we always have enough people to be productive. So just throwing that out there that I get it and I know that more doesn't always make make better, but in this particular case. It may help us to keep doing our work without having to ever call one because we can't get a form.
Uh and yes, and the alternates can help with.
Correct, with the forms.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. Just any more discussion?
Yes.
I don't wanna, okay, super. Alright, roll call vote beginning with Miss Bean.
Bean, yes.
Gould, yes.
Gascoigne, yes?
Fritz, yes.
Alright, great. And so then the final bit of this committee piece that I hope we can move through quickly and move on to our next agenda item. Is to appoint two board members um to to serve as like a little subcommittee who will go through. The uh the 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 folks who submit their names and make recommendations to our full body to appoint. So is there anyone interested? I know you did it last year, Mister Fritz. Is there anyone who would like to do that? Basically, it'll be a publicly noticed meeting. Um, and then the the two board members, I believe Greg and Tom sat here last year if I'm not mistaken. Um, and just went through those and and discussed them and then brought them back to the full board at our next meeting.
Yeah.
Bean?
So I would like to say. We are wanting to have new voices and new things, and so I would like to choose two different people than last year. I mean, obviously, Tom's not an option since he's not here. Um, Greg already helps see or or help recommend the ones who are there right now. And so I would like to give opportunities. To the rest of the board to um do that part of it this time, just to have multiple. Points of view represented, right?
So who represents the view of people that voted no on twelve last year in that worldview, Terry?
Uh Mister Gould, I see your hand.
So this is a one-time meeting to review the candidates.
Yes, correct.
So I actually think it should be not Terry or Greg because. I feel like it would give us a broader range of. Uh candidates, instead of them handpicking, I think it would just seem a little. A little more influence on every from everybody, whereas if they're handpicking, where they would like. I don't know, it just.
It could look like it anyway. It could look like we were saying, hey, this is who I wanna.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's that's fair.
And I don't, I don't mean to take that from you, Greg. I just think that gives the the Ford as a whole a bigger voice and I'm not anyone saying I wanna do it. I I just think that.
But I think you did just say you.
And I don't wanna speak for Jason, but I think that would give us the the board itself a a little bit bigger voice on this, because it is a very. Like Mike said, it is a very important thing because it's not just twelve, it is far beyond that.
And and just as a reminder to everyone, those two folks will bring their recommendation. So that's not to say that the body can't.
Right.
You know, we we will all have access to everything that's sent in to review as well. And we could certainly discuss it in in the full meeting. So I did wanna add that little caveat. Last year I was on Building and Grounds and chose not. To be part of that for that reason. Um, I don't have a strong feeling um either way. On on who's on the committee. Greg, is your, I don't see a virtual hand, but I see.
Oh, yeah, I'm doing a real hand. Is that okay?
Screen, yes, sir.
Can I do real hands? Okay. Yeah, so um I mean, I just completely, the. I don't understand why that's the conclusion, if that's actually your principle about saying, oh, we don't want handpick, we want fresh voices. The three of you are part of the same brain trust that has supported the same failed policies. Over and over and over again in recent years. If you want new voices, you wouldn't want you three to be. Among the ones picking the new voices. We all know that you guys thought twelve would go up again and you got nothing moved on it. I'm the, I I represent the people who understand that we need thirteen, fourteen, fifteen to pass. And twelve was not reflective of the values of our community. None of you understand that better than I do. I should be on that committee to pick the people. Who are going to help this town move forward.
Mister Mister Fritz, I'm just gonna ask that as we're making our comments, that we try to, you know, refrain from any sort of personal.
Those are facts. Those are not, those are not personal attacks. You voted in a way that does not reflect the values that pass the building. That we need to get prepared. And I understand that community we need to capture. If you want to continue the same brain trust, then do what you're doing. If you really are open and honest about saying we need new voices, I represent a different voice and I can pick the different voices that you would ignore.
Great. So Greg, your point then is that you would like to be part of the subcommittee that goes through the list.
That's right.
Super, thank you, Mister Gould.
I think that was completely inappropriate, Greg, for you to single me in a group, you you people, like. You don't even know me yet. So for you to to call me out on on the way I I vote, how do you know how I vote?
Did you vote, yes, on twelve last three years?
Okay.
That is not, that is not relevant, Greg.
It is relevant. It is relevant.
Gentlemen, alright, I'm gonna get us back in order, please.
I need you to answer the question. If you wanna speak, speak. Go ahead, speak.
Mister Fritz, I'd like to get us back on order. We have. Limited time and we have actual work to get through, which is why we call this off-cycle meeting. So right now. What we need to do is appoint two members to collect the forms of interest and to bring a recommendation to the committee. At this point, I've heard from Mister Gould that you would like to to do that, okay? And I've heard from Mister Fritz that you would like to do that.
And Terry.
Who would like to do that? Terry?
I I know that Jason's not here, but I would actually. I would like to remind you. That some of the sitting members of this committee were indeed brought forward. By Mister Fritz and his his suggestion that he had no no say in that and that he had. No voice and and who is currently on the committee is false. Because he was the one who brought the recommendations to the full board last year. And so you absolutely have had an opportunity and I would like to give the opportunity to a broader portion of the board for this round. And so even though Jason's not here, I would like to extend the opportunity for Jason and Brian to be the ones who. Who go through the list. So I I am sensitive to Brian's point. That I will serve with anybody, right? And so it to have not have the appearance of Greg or myself. Selecting who we think is a great idea because we should be willing to serve with anyone. I think that it would, it would be. A more productive thing to have members who are not currently sitting on the committee. Bring forward the suggestions for who is on the committee. That's my opinion.
Okay.
And it's just opinion, obviously, and it doesn't mean that any of us are more valid or less valid, but I would like to remind. That Greg has had the opportunity in the last round to bring forward the recommendations.
Didn't bring him forward, Terry. People had applied to the board. And we had to choose people to bring forward to the board based on residency requirements. We didn't, I we didn't throw anybody out. I have been approached by several people. That don't wanna serve under the same failed leadership that we've had in the past years. That would like to work with me on these kinds of matters. And I think we can engage the people that you frankly have identified that we need. To come around to yes on twelve. And I think, I think including those people is key. Now, maybe you guys will do the right thing and still appoint those people. But we really need to have um a larger aperture here and a professional uh demographic of uh volunteers. And we need to be able to do this outside of the current brain trust.
Well, and Greg, we don't even know what twelve's gonna be yet. It's it's we've already, none of us have said it's just gonna be the same thing. We're pretty sure it's very much not. Gonna be the same thing again. So to say, well, yeah, it's just the same thing over and over is absolutely untrue.
I'm not sure about that, Terry. I made a motion to try to call, repeat the same failed plan as as last year. There wasn't even a second for discussion. So I don't know if you guys are planning. Uh as a majority to just keep pursuing the same old approach.
Mister Fritz, right now, what we are discussing is appointing two members to simply vet. And go through what comes in from the community and to bring a recommendation to the board. The full board, whether you're part of that. Two-person committee will still have an opportunity to look through all of these. And to discuss it. This, these two people are not making the final decision. They're bringing a recommendation to the board. And that's what we're discussing right now. We're not talking about what twelve is going to be. That will be the work of the committee on that you are on. That you are a part of along with Miss Bean. Today, we're simply trying to put a call out to the community. For additional new, fresh voices, all of the things that that you're saying. That's what we're trying to get to. So I just need two folks who can work together respectfully to sit down and go through those and bring a recommendation to the board. Miss Bean, it sounds like you have offered Mister White and Mister Gould, is that correct? Are you, is that a motion that you're making?
A motion I make her.
Okay, Miss Bean has moved to offer um for for Mister White and Mister Gould. To take on that task on behalf of the board and to bring those recommendations back to the full board where we can discuss it and we will all have our voice. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mister Gould has seconded. Is there any additional discussion on the motion on the floor? I don't see a virtual hand or a real hand.
We're good.
Okay. Alright, so I will call the vote, roll call vote, beginning with Miss Bean.
Bean, yes.
Gould, yes.
Gascoigne, yes?
Fritz, yes.
Great, thank you all for the discussion. So we're gonna move on now to our next and final item on the agenda, which is personnel. We have four.
Hey, sorry. I'm sorry, well, so I'm building grounds. Can I, one more last question?
Um, that that's that, those were all the pages. It's related to the.
It is. It is. I just wanna know, you mentioned that the opening comment and I didn't wanna interrupt you at the time, that uh Terry and I are the appropriate point of contact. For Building and Grounds. Um, I wanna understand why was the Building and Grounds meeting that was scheduled, why was that canceled without Terry or I knowing about it? And is it, well, first of all, I don't wanna get into a fight. Was that inappropriate? Was that just simply a mistake to cancel that meeting without notifying the school board representatives to that committee?
Yep, and I did respond to you, Greg. I think that.
I want it on the record from Mike, because the people, whoever did it in the SAU, I want it on the record that that was a mistake and that they will, they will extend the courtesy of the. School board members that have been assigned to lead that committee.
Yep, so so Greg. That was communicated with the board that 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 was going to be canceled.
That was knocking to the board.
I'm not gonna argue, and this was not our topic on the agenda today, and and I'm happy to discuss this further um at at another time.
I asked for it to be on the agenda and you didn't put it on. Put it on the next meeting. I don't, you're not gonna put it on again. I mean, I I don't understand why it's some simple saying. Yes, we understand that Shannon's right, that Terry and Greg are the point of contact for Building and Grounds Matters and that we will respect that role and we'll address them when we're. Planning on scheduling meetings or canceling meetings. That's all I'm saying.
And and I and I, that's the process that will move forward, Greg.
So was it a mistake to do, was it, was it a mistake to cancel the meeting this week without notifying Terry and me?
You and Terry were notified. The full board was notified that the that the meeting was going to be canceled. We're going to move on. We have a very brief meeting today and the most important part of it is personnel and that's what we're moving into. We have committee time on our next week's schedule and we can discuss this further at that time if you would like. But today we need to get on with the business of the meeting and we're moving into personnel. We have four hiring nominations and a hiring season process memo to discuss. Superintendent Barry, would you like to share a bit about the four nominations that you're bringing us today?
Yes, so um in personnel, there's two sections for us today to to talk about. Uh, we're bringing four names uh to be hired for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Uh, they've gone through a a rigorous. Uh, you know, interview process and uh I met with um. Well, these these uh, these candidates and um I would like to um. Be able to nominate. To the board for approval, Sarah DeMers. Um, as a one-year position, as we have a teacher out on a a year-long leave. As seventh grade ELA, I'd like to nominate Stephanie Worker as a uh learning specialist, special ed case manager. I'd like to nominate Emily Murray, AMS, part-time innovation and design teacher. And I'd like to nominate Nadine DeRoches as a reading specialist uh for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Their information. Is included in your board packet uh with their resumes and uh the nomination form where you can see salaries. And um we still have some open positions, but for today, I'd like to nominate these four and get the approval of the slate. Um, if there's questions that are non-public in nature, uh we can move into non-public to discuss. These candidates further, but um I would like the school board to make a recommendation to approve the nomination of the slate of. Teachers to be hired for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Great. Does anyone have any questions um that we would need to move into non-public before? Uh, making the motion to recommend the slate?
I I don't think it's it requires them. Public, I have.
Try.
I was really impressed by the by the um by the the design for the and and her vast experience and I'm just. Um, I guess I was just furious when she was willing to go to a part-time and I'm guessing it's kind of a partial retirement kind of thing.
Yes, she's a uh very much invested in the Amherst community. Um, very much uh interested in in the maker space and AMS Middle School. Uh, has a, as you see from her resume, a wealth of an experience. Uh, and it fits into her personal life and her professional life right now as a, as she calls it, semi-retired. Teacher and uh we, I think we're, this is the appeal of Amherst. You can attract highly quality people to do jobs that. May in other places not be able to attract a highly qualified person. Two-fifths, right, of a, you know, quote, four in the world. So we're very lucky.
Okay, good. So I I didn't think it needed non-public, um but I'm excited that we have somebody with such a vast amount of experience and investment in the community.
Yeah.
That's I I would, I would motion to accept.
Hold on, Greg has a, Greg?
I have a public comment. Can I make that now?
Ken?
So Mike, um at the Zohegan meeting, I heard that uh the practice is to let teachers do like a a demo lesson. Something, I forget what you call it exactly. Do we do that in our district?
We do, um and for most positions, um we do, we do rate uh go through that process where. You know, they have a screening. Uh, and then this has been discussed in previous meetings. We have a screening round, we have an interview round. And then we have an application round. And for most candidates, there will be a where it's it's viable, we have an application round. Sometimes when you get into specialist positions, like part-time innovation and design and reading specialist, they're bad application round or that second interview looks a little bit different.
So do they teach, like, do they do a sample lesson? Like, I heard, I thought Zohegan teachers, when they apply, they do a sample lesson in the classroom. Do our teachers? Applicants do that?
Yeah.
Cool, okay, thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you all, Miss Bean.
So I'd like to nominate to accept um as presented.
So Miss Bean makes the motion to accept the slate of nominations as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mister Gould. Any additional discussion? We'll begin with a roll call vote, starting with Miss Bean.
Bean, yes.
Gould, yes.
Gascoigne, yes?
Fritz, yes.
Motion carries and welcome to our our newest folks.
Alright, then in the second piece um of this is something that we typically have done in the past. Uh, usually uh usually it was June, July, August. Then with the the hiring practices. And the competitive nature of teachers, uh last year we moved it up to May. And then this year I've asked for people to move it up to to April in the three districts. It's it's the hiring season memo memo. Where we award or uh the superintendent the authority to offer contracts. To candidates contingent on a board approval at the next meeting. So for example, last weekend at Zohegan, they had an April third meeting. Their next meeting not is not for five more weeks. In May. So we need to be, can't lose candidates because of the competitive nature of the field. And I wanna be able to say, I'm gonna bring your name forward to the board in four weeks. This helps us um acquire. Uh candidates to start or acquire candidates and ask them to stop their their search. And then it, the board still ultimately has the approval. And then in the memo, there's a process. If you have questions about individual candidates, that. that we we can go through, that we can get your questions answered to make you feel more comfortable with the the nomination. Not the approval, because the approval is ultimately at the next meeting. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the hiring seat or or allow the superintendent the authority to offer contracts contingent on board approval um for the month of April, moving April, May, June, July, August if openings arise.
Yeah, and to be clear, that's actually because we haven't gone through this process, that's why we're having this eight forty-five meeting today. Because the uh we have not empowered the superintendent to to go through this process. So once we do this, you know, we wouldn't have to schedule this type of meeting every time they want to um to to, you know, to offer the contract. So are there any questions before um or before we take a motion? Do we need to discuss this, Mr. Fritz?
I have a question. Uh, was this only for teacher positions and uh folks that report within the building to the principals? Or are you imagining there would be positions of principal, since superintendent uh level positions? How 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 do you, how do you break that down?
So uh support staff is not brought to the board for approval uh through our policy and our process. Um, professional staff, including teachers and administrators at the building level are are brought through that process. Uh, SAU administrators and building level people are brought to the SAU board.
Could we, could we change, would you mind, Mike? And I'm, what is the real question? I want to know your opinion. If if we if we modify the motion to allow you to do this for non-administrators, not principals as in principals, but only for teachers, would that affect your plans at all?
It it would.
Okay.
Because I would say assistant principals or principals, it is more competitive in that level of positionings than than um than teachers. And so it would if that was, but for this season, I don't anticipate having building level administrative positions opening. Um, and uh, so that process is uh quite competitive and and I can tell you, you know, when we see each other next, just some examples of how competitive building level administrative positions are and ultimately how competitive SAU positions are. And I will tell you, people are interested in doing this work like they did ten, fifteen years ago. And we have to be very mindful that we're going to be able to offer up the educational experience and achieve our mission of engage, challenge, and support students while taking care of the whole student. I need to be, as the the board only employee, be able to attract and retain teachers. And this is the process that allows me to do that. So I appreciate the 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 motion and uh looking to to move forward with this.
Okay, so since I don't think it would change your plans for this year, I'd like to make a motion that we allow Mike to have the power as he desires for teachers or obtaining the ability for the school board to be more involved in administration and um other level positions as they come up.
I'm sorry, Greg. Could you repeat yourself? I'm not.
So my motion is to give Mike the authority to make the hires he wants at the teacher level.
No principals, no, nothing else. I think it's what he's.
That's right.
He's scared.
Because I I think we all agreed, maybe we don't. I thought we had um wanted previously to be more involved in um enforcing the fact that we have good feedback from our residents, what kind of values we want for administrators like principals and others that are involved in the evaluation of teachers. But I think we can um make this motion to allow Mike to move quickly on these strategic hires for teaching level positions, but not admin positions.
Okay, so Mr. Fritz has made a motion. Is there a second?
Mike, are you okay with that wording?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, you're not. I tried to try to meet match what you were saying.
I don't see a second.
I don't think it's necessary. I
Well, until we have a second, we have no discussion. So is there a second? Would someone else like to offer a motion regarding the memo for the hiring?
I'll withdraw them. I'll withdraw the motion.
Thank you.
I I would like to motion as as currently written and presented to accept that.
So Miss Bean would like to make a motion to um accept the nomination appointment process as presented to the board for the spring and summer hiring season of twenty twenty-five. Is there a second for this motion?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Gould. Is there any discussion?
Call the vote.
Miss B, I'm 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 presenting.
Um, so I I think that we've certainly done this in the past and it's worked very well. And we absolutely still get an opportunity to to raise any concerns and have any questions. And um we absolutely do need to be nimble. It's a very competitive field. So I appreciate the fact that you you brought it to us um in a timely way, because I do know that we have openings and I look forward to seeing.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, beginning with Miss Bean.
Bean, yes.
Gould, yes.
Gascoigne, yes?
Fritz, yes.
Motion carries. All right, that is all of our items on the agenda. Thank you very much. Um, I will open a final public comment. There is no one in the room. If there is anyone online who would like to offer comment, you may do so in the chat. Uh, we have.
There's one hand up.
So I see one hand up, Mr. Almeida, if you would like to place your comment into the chat. And we'll give you a minute to do that because I understand that the typing of that can take a bit. And we don't need a non-public, is that right?
Not too bad, kind of super.
I was ready to take my notes.
You wanted to practice on it.
Had you ready to go. This is the chat.
Oh.
Is chat enabled?
I guess that would help them.
Last time I was vegan, it was disabled for a while.
That's my fault. Yeah, where is the chat permissions?
It says hosted. Oh, hosted. Is it under the hosted panels there in the far, that little blue box?
I think it goes under uh, if you go up to Zoom permissions. Um, you know, maybe the three dots, try the three dots down there.
I think bottom, like Shannon said, the two hosting panels.
Hosting panel, the bottom one.
Your chat. I think that there's three dots over there that you can.
Everyone.
Everyone. All right. I'm sorry about that.
That might be just for us to chat.
So you should be able to put the chat in. My apologies. Uh, I haven't run the Zoom. Usually there's someone else helping me.
It's still not there.
Is there anything else that you have to enable? Yeah.
Get those three dots, Mike.
There's one right here.
Shannon, do you want to move to re-modify the policy to allow him to give his comment with the video?
There you go. Good job.
I'll read it, folks. This is Michael Almeida. I agree with Dr. Fritz. We have to have different voices. I also want the board to understand that they voted to not present any other options last year, very early in the process. Thus forcing any building and grounds members not to be able to make any changes. Everyone but Dr. Fritz very well, very vocally advocated for Article twelve. I'm disappointed by your decision to silence the voice of forty-six percent of voters represented by Dr. Fritz. This continued behavior of groupthink, unilateral decision-making should concern all residents. I am just also disappointed by the changes, changing the process in which hiring is done. We have made it less transparent, not more transparent. Now it will be a bad candidate experience if Mike offers a job and the board does not approve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other uh comments from the virtual? If you're in virtu, if you're attending virtually and are typing your comment in the chat, feel free to raise your virtual hand so we know and we will wait. Okay, say no virtual hands raised, nothing in the chat. We will, I'll take them, accept a motion to adjourn this meeting at nine forty-five.
I'm making motion.
So moved by Mr. Gould. Seconded by Miss Bean. Motion is adjourned. Uh, meeting is adjourned at nine forty-five. Greg, thanks for dialing in. Have a great day.